We'll call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of April 16th to order. And we'll start with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up on our agenda is the Community Development Block Grant Hearing. And the council has received, over a week ago, received all the individual requests for funding. So we've seen those applications. What we're going to do tonight is we'll open it up to the council and start with questions because I know there was a workshop last Monday where councilors had worked on this, all these proposals already. But tonight, we want to make sure that we cover everything that we need to cover tonight. And the nonprofits are here tonight, so if anybody has any questions, we can ask. So council. Go ahead, go ahead, Scott.
First of all, I think it's disappointing that we had to do this quickly. And we didn't have really a lot of time to reflect on it. And I'm not set in stone about my rankings, you know, basically comparing all groups. I didn't rank 12, which is Rowland Center Assisting Those Need RICAN. And I didn't rank South County Habitat Humanity. And I didn't rank Washington County CDC. I'm interested in hearing comments about RICAN and whether or not they should receive funding. I know Councilor Calvo is at the last meeting, had very strong feelings about funding them. And I do plan to question when it comes up to the public on those issues. My ranking, and I probably varied from the council, I put the social welfare type groups probably ahead of things in the town. I don't believe the economy is that good. Despite comments the contrary, you see, I think a lot of people are really hurting. And I think sometimes human needs are a little more important than some of the physical things that we could do in our community. That's just my bias. And when you're on a council, you have biases and people elect you to your vision or whatever. But I am flexible. And like I said, this is not cobwebs and stones. I'm here to listen. Number 11, I put Warm Shelter renovations. The Warm Shelter has been in this region for a long time, and I think it's a project that deserves to be completed. And then we can go on to other things. So I put the Warm Shelter renovations number one. Number two, the Education Exchange, which is small amount of money. I think to get people back in the workforce, people have to have skills. You just can't say, well, give this person a job. Number eight, Warm Shelter Job Readiness, I made three. 10, the Johnny Cake Center Wesley is my fourth. Seven was Domestic Violence Resource Center. I don't know how extensive domestic violence is in our town because it's a very private thing and a very concealed thing. You can only speculate on those types of things. And then I thought I should go back into the town. And I put Brushy Brook Bridge number two, the next one. Number one, Langworthy Field Improvements. Three, Revitalization Management. Four, Townwide Rental Rehabilitation Program. And then I went five, which is the Townwide Housing Rehabilitation Operating. Then I went to Welcome House Operating 13. And then I went to the Welcome House Generator. And then I was a little leery about the Community Housing Land Trust because I was trying to find its connection to Hopkin, but it said like it does select consulting work. I don't know how much they've done, and I put that 16. But like, I'm not cutting stone on this, and I do want to hear some comments about RICAN. And the other one is South County Habitat Humanity. I'm concerned about that property, where it's going to be located. And I think it's, the organization's a great organization, but the site on Wall Street and Asher Way in that area, I have a concern about that. And I choose, I chose, excuse me, not to rank that. And number 15, the Washington County CDC, I was trying to find a connection to Hopkin and on that. And like, my position's not cut in stone. I had to make a choice in a ranking, and I'm list, I'm open to discussion and persuasion. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I ranked for the Community Development Block Grant applications, really the five that impact Hopkinton. First, Langworthy Field Improvements. Townwide Rental Rehab is number two. Number three is Townwide Housing Rehab and Operating. Number four is Revitalization Management. And number five is Brushy Brook. South County Habitat, we're going to put that in the bottom section. And basically, I concur with my fellow counselor about the order in which these other nonprofits should be ranked. The Resource Center would be number six. Welcome House, seven. RICAN, eight. Warm Shelter, nine. Johnny Cake, 10. Habitat, 11. Welcome House Generator is 12. Warm Shelter is 13. Education Exchange, 14. Community Land Trust, 15. And Washington County CDC, 16. So I made my decision based on, again, what projects will impact our town directly first, and everything else fell in after that, so.
On those rankings, there are two WARMs. What was the first WARM?
Warm Shelter.
There were two?
For 8,000.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And then the Warm Shel, oh, I'm sorry, Warm Renovation was 25,000. That was the...
That was the...
Subsequent one.
Right. And then the Welcome House had two, requests two.
Welcome House Generator was before the Warm Shelter for 3,000. And the Welcome House Operating was at the top of the list for 5,000. That was number five, six, seven.
Okay.
So again, I'm open to hear some folks too here, just like Scott. Nothing's really carved in stone, but I felt very strongly about the projects that impact our town directly first, and then I'm open to hear any other rankings that you folks may suggest, so.
All right. I pulled some information together that I had access to, and then I asked Jeff for some income guidelines. For instance, I wanted to, I've been curious about this, and Jeff provided, Jeff Marchand provided it to me. And he gave, I wanted to know, what are the income guidelines for the Community Development Block Grant? In order to be eligible to actually apply for this, you need to be dealing with individuals for a certain income. And I'll give you an example. For Hopkinton, for a four-person family, it goes anywhere from a very low income limit is 42,800, extremely low is 25,700. But it goes all the way up to a four-person family for 65,000. Those are the low. So there's very low, extreme low, and then there's the low. And all three groups are eligible. Right. So the guideline, the cutoff for a four-person family would be, for instance, 65,000 to be eligible. Good. Something else I wanted to make the council aware of is, in our town, the food, what we've known as the Food Stamp Program in the past is now called SNAP, which is, what's that stand for? I know everybody else knows. What is it?
Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program.
Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program. Thank you. The benefits in Hopkinton, specifically for us, SNAP has increased from 2005 to 2011, the number of individuals needing SNAP, which is food, you know, it replaces the Food Stamp Program, was 219 percent increase from 2005. So that's what we're looking at. I mean, we hear it, we know it, but that's the numbers as they shake out for our town. That's 268 individuals who participated, individuals who participated in 2011. Another item that I found of interest, specifically, when I, let me back up a minute. Over the years, and I asked the clerk's office, and I asked the planner's office, and they worked together on it because Jim, our planner, was out the end of last week. But I asked Lisa if she could look back into the record and pull out some data for the council, and that was, what has the town done in the last four years? Who's come in for money? And who has, how did we rank the agencies over the last four years? And what were the amounts that they requested and received? Lisa pulled that out and worked with the planner, planner's office, the clerk, and got the rest of the information. And that was provided to you. So that was one piece because, I thought it was an important piece because in the past, what the council's tried to do is, when it comes to the nonprofits and the agencies, not the town, I'm not talking about town-sponsored activities with rehab program, whatever, but just the nonprofits and the agencies, what the council has tried in the past to do is take turns because they're all very worthwhile. They all deal with Hopkinton people. They all deal in different amounts. It depends what the services are, but they all provide information to our neediest residents. And they are all worthwhile. So we've, in the past, taken turns. So what I wanted the council to be aware of is how that shook out. How did we rank them in the past, and how have we taken turns? And I think that Frank's, because I talked to Frank about it, and his suggestions for the ranking takes into account an analysis of what the town has done in the past. It's not a reflection of who's better, who's first in line. It's a reflection of what we've done in the past. Two proposals, resource, let's see, no, it was Johnny Cake Center and RICAN. I looked at, because the numbers in here, I thought, Johnny Cake provides food, we know what they do. I mean, they provide a lot of food to area people and other items. RICAN provides food and maybe other things. So I looked at RICAN, and I looked at the Johnny Cake, and I looked at the numbers. And as it turned out, the Johnny Cake Center has dealt with, of the number of people they've dealt with, the number from Hopkinton is 9.8 percent. So of all the people they dealt with at Johnny Cake Center, it was 9.8 for Hopkinton. And RICAN, of all the people they dealt with, 9.8 percent were Hopkinton. So I wanted to point out that the numbers line up together. They're both dealing with food. And we also know that the SNAP participation has dramatically increased in Hopkinton. So those things tell me that when it comes to RICAN, that it's a very important agency for our residents, just as all the rest are very important. RICAN, I believe, is a little newer for our area, maybe not. Is someone here for RICAN? No, okay. I think they're a little newer on the scene, certainly with their big building. However, some of the other agencies have been around a little longer. But bottom line is, we can look at the numbers and see how they're doing. Anyway, I think that was all I had. So we've got Jeff Marchand here, our planners here, and the nonprofits. Were there any specific questions that we had for any of the nonprofits?
A little so.
Jeff, could I talk to you about the Brushy Brook Bridge proposal? Okay. Couple things. It's a state bridge, but this proposal and proposals in the past, for instance, the street scapes in the past were funded. What was funded in the past was...
Depot Square?
Yeah, the Depot Square. But the street scape proposal that was funded in the past, that was sidewalks, wasn't it? What's street scapes?
Streets, street scapes.
I mean, that's sidewalks, isn't it?
Street scapes are, you know, there can be trees, there can be bushes, there can be sidewalks, there can be signage, anything in the public right of way as an improvement as a street scape.
All right. So, yeah, because it was, one of the things about the bridge was, you know, that's a state thing, and they got to fix their bridges. But that, though, we've already, in the past, have funded the street scape, and that was sidewalks along Main Street in Hope Valley, right?
Yeah, we did do some work. A lot of that money, not a lot, I don't remember, some of that money got amended into the Depot Square activity, just to meet bid and stuff.
Okay. So it was, why don't you tell us a little bit about that proposal specifically? Is there anything more to add?
Well, it comes now because we finally have, I don't want to say room for it, Chief Stanley asked for that a couple of years ago. He's concerned because he's seen people walking up and down, and they've complained to him, they're tripping on that sidewalk, and it's, you know, you have your parades up and down Main Street in Hope Valley. He feels it's dangerous. I don't think the state's going to get to it in a hurry. And one of the guiding principles of CDBG, if an activity supports something already put in place with CDBG, it's supposed to be more competitive for funding. So the argument is it leads local people working in Hope Valley down to Depot Square so they can cross over that bridge without having to worry about tripping and breaking their neck if we fix it.
All right.
But just to ask you, Jeff, and I know that, and I did rank it, obviously, but I think the concern was mentioned at the last meeting that it is a state road, so why, I think it was said, why should it be on the list when it is a state road and the state have an obligation to take care of it? I mean, you know, it's like, it's state property.
Yes, they do, but the state's overextended and the obligation's unmet. I don't think they're in a hurry to run down Hope Valley and do Brushy Brook Bridge, not when the big bridge by Providence Place Mall is threatening to fall down any day now.
My concern, and the reason I ranked a lot of the social welfare organizations high is I don't think the economy is that good. If the economy was better, then you wouldn't, the social welfare type organizations wouldn't have a stronger argument. Because I, I mean, you just listen to people talking, people that have their own homes that aren't, that don't need temporary shelter, and they're concerned about the economy. And I just don't think we're out of the woods yet when it comes to the economy. I mean, and I'm not, and I think the Langworthy Field and all these things are very meritorious, but we have people, fellow Hopkintonians that are hurting. And that was my concern. The other thing is, and I'll put you on the spot, do you think the council should seriously entertain RICAN?
Yeah. They're a legitimate applicant. They're doing good stuff. They just have an issue with their numbers.
But the thing is, if you're a councilperson and you're supposed to be reasonably intelligent, that, and you want to have some level of consistency, you got to, you got to have the facts. And I also have to take into account when a group doesn't show up at a meeting to address the town. I mean, particularly when there's been some controversy in the past, or at least recently. But I do have a question for...
Well, Scott, let me, you know, if you, if you, the town of Hopkinton, were in a position where it had to cut its application amounts to get to your limit, then yeah, if somebody doesn't show up and you're uncomfortable with funding them, don't fund them. But we're not in that position. And, you know, is someone, is leaving RICAN in, going to compete with somebody else? I don't know. I've mentioned many times that I don't see a lot of consistency in what the state does in making their funding decisions. So it's a, it's a roll in the dice. Who knows what they're going to do this year? They're down a million bucks from the normal allocation, so it's going to be tighter, I think statewide to get stuff funded.
How about the rationale for maybe giving the Johnny Cake Center more because they do that service?
No, they didn't ask for more.
No, my understanding is that, I know what you're saying, and it might seem like a ridiculous question, but I look at it, you have two agencies that provide food, Johnny Cake Center and RICAN, and there has been some concern about RICAN, which seems to be legitimate.
Scott, let me suggest something to you. There isn't any controversy in my mind with RICAN. I, that's why I provided the documents, because I heard certain comments that were made, certain issues were brought up. RICAN, Johnny Cake provide food. They're right in line with the documents that are coming out of Rhode Island when they do an analysis of every city in town. So the numbers add up. I looked at Johnny Cake, and I, mathematically, they're dealing with 9.8 percent of the population. And then RICAN's dealing with 9.8 percent. That tells me that they're, they're right on. So I don't see, so I disagree that there's any controversy. There might be with some people, but there isn't in my mind. When I look at the information and the analysis and the numbers, and they add up and they match other, another agency that's been around for a long time, that tells me their numbers must be right. So...
Well, I mean, I'm basing a lot of it on, you know, things that I do the years and also the comments at the last meeting. How about the fact they didn't show up?
Oh, that they're not here today?
Yeah.
I don't know. They provided a proposal. I don't have a problem with it. I don't know. They're not here. I don't know what happened. Maybe she had a flat tire on the way here. I don't, they've submitted the proposal, they attended the first hearing, and they all submitted their proposals?
I don't recall if they attended the first hearing.
Or did they come in the mail? Or, how did they, how did they arrive in?
I don't think she was here.
How did the, let me ask you a question. How did the proposals come into the town? I'm curious. How does that happen?
We do advertise. We put a notice, actually widely, Providence Journal, the Southern Rhode Island Newspapers, Wesley Sun, all had notices published, you know, announcing the towns, all of them, intention to apply for a block grant, saying there'll be a public hearing on a date certain, a specific place. People who have been applying for years know about it. Anyway...
Does the ad require people to show up, or does it?
No.
If somebody mailed something in, you'd accept it?
Yeah.
And they did it before the deadline, so it doesn't require anybody to be here?
No.
Neither did our ad for this hearing?
No, the hearings...
Didn't require anybody to be here tonight?
The hearings are required to be held, but the attendance is not required.
I just thought that in light of what was said last week, that anybody showed up. And I appreciate your views on that. Like I said, my position's not cut in stone, but I thought, and I know the council that wasn't here was very concerned about that. I do have a question of Linda Barton.
Before we jump onto that, could we finish with the bridge?
Yes.
I was incorrect when I called it street scapes. It was actually crosswalks. That's what they, when I look back to see what had been funded, it was Hope Valley crosswalks.
Yeah.
And crosswalks, that's, you know, that costs nothing to paint.
One, well, it's not a painted crosswalk. It's a decorative crosswalk.
What is it?
Similar to the ones in Peastale. Have you ever get down to Peastale?
What did you call it, a what?
Decorative.
Okay.
It's a, I'm not a chemist, but it's, it's not a stamped concrete. It's a, help me out, somebody who's got a chemistry background?
So it wasn't, it wasn't sidewalks?
It's an epoxy kind of a thing you mix up. That's a...
It's concrete?
Huh?
It's concrete?
It's not concrete. It's some kind of a mix. And it's not even stamped. Did they stamp the Peastale? Yeah? They stamped her crosswalk. But, yeah, that's a 50% design. Dealing with DOT is not fast.
Yeah, and I wanted to ask you, before you go anywhere, about housing rehab in the past. 2010, I'm just, I don't expect you to remember this, but from the proposals last four years, in 2010, oh, let me go back further, in 2008, housing rehab, townwide housing rehab, received 48,000 in 2008. In 2009, we got zero. In 2010, we got 5,000. And that, and nothing in 2011. Is there, do you know from memory, is there any money left in any of the CDBGs for Hopkinton Townwide Rehab?
There's no money in active open contracts. What we do have is money in program income from loans that are, ooh, loans that are being repaid.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
So we take, we loan this money, and then they make payments on it monthly.
So we don't do grants anymore? It's all loans?
It's all loans.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's either zero or three, depending on income.
So it replenishes the fund?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. Got you.
Jeff, I'm just curious, why does the state use the same form letter for these award letters? Is the priority always the same? It's just weird. It's like the same letter every year.
Yeah, isn't it?
I mean, I know it's easy to do that, but can the priorities be the same every single year?
The published priorities are the same. The awards, based on those priorities, are not consistent.
And we're eligible for 300,000 this year?
This is the state's response to cutbacks at the federal level. They toyed with the idea, because it's been longstanding state...
300,000 is not bad. I mean, we've gone down a lot less.
You won't get 300,000.
No, of course, well, it depends, depends. And I, you know, over years, we have gotten close to the limit. And I believe that it's, you know, kind of an return system to a certain extent. But it depends on the emergencies and the issues statewide.
Yeah. Last fall, at the management workshop, the state proposed a couple of things. One was break from longstanding state policy and do not give a town, do not guarantee every town that applies, something. Everybody was opposed to that. So the second alternative that was adopted was cut back the application limits from, in Hopkinton, 400 to 300.
Yeah, I believe all this, everything that came in adds up to, what, 290 or thereabouts?
Should be 300 on the button.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is 300.
All right, so it wasn't 300.
Well, yeah, we tailored.
So we do not have to cut any agencies? Okay. Yeah, all right. Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? All right, thank you. You had a question, Linda Barton?
Yes, please.
See, we're going to get you up out of those awfully uncomfortable benches. I knew you'd like that.
I believe I told, good to see you. I believe I told you last week the question I was going to ask. My concern in ranking, and I was, and it's very difficult to rank these things, and how much overflow do you get from, I know you take people from the Warm Shelter if they don't have room, and I was just wondering. I was debating how to rank these things, and I know, and I thought about, for example, the generator, and I said, how many people in Hopkin would probably go there if their reason was...
I'm glad you asked me that question because I'd like to correct your thought process on that. Welcome House of South County is a private entity that happens to be in South Kingstown. The Warm Center is a private entity that happens to be in Westerly. Do we work collaboratively with one another? Absolutely. Have we exchanged guests because somebody from the Warm Center has a job in South Kingstown or Narragansett, or vice versa? Absolutely. We are not an overflow for the Warm Center. Whoever has room gives priority to Washington County residents, period. And that call may come to me. If I don't have any room, I suggest that they call the Warm Center, and I'm sure they do the same. You asked another question, and I put together a little sheet, information sheet for you, that you might find helpful considering the things that you just asked. May I?
Yes, please.
Thirteen different identified Hopkinton residents were served in 2011. The average length of stay was 67.4 days, which is up 22 days since 2010. This is posted at a federally posted rate of shelter-only services of $12.50. That equation equals $10,952.50. There's a social service component that is added on to that for each individual, for their total length of stay being $1,450. Now, this may be for case management, applying for SSI, food stamps, unemployment, TDI, SSI, we're fighting TDI cases now, unemployment, et cetera. A few of them are listed there. That equals another $18,850 for a total, a total for 13 Hopkinton residents of $29,802.50. Most of the towns have found this little equation very helpful, because everybody's basing the rate on that $12.50 a day. And again, that's based on the FEMA federal rate, provides night of shelter and three meals a day. The soup kitchen, there were 100 meals provided to Hopkinton residents at $1.25 per meal. That was for the entire year. That came out to $125. Volunteers, there were no volunteers from Hopkinton. And what I usually like to do is, when I total the actual costs up, your volunteers from your town are rated at an in-kind match of $15 per hour. I then subtract the volunteer hours from the total cost. So you didn't have any volunteers, so your total cost for provisions provided were $29,927.50.
It's another way to look at things, like the ambulances, the fire departments, some cities and towns, municipalities, they have to hire, they do that. We have volunteers, you know, that handle it. So, you know, bottom line is if, for instance, the town of Hopkinton, if you don't provide ambulance, you don't provide fire, because you've got volunteers to do it. But there, when, there are, as you know, foundations out there that want you to go through this exercise. It matters, so...
I've been volunteering with the Ashaway ambulance, helping them to find and write grants. I'm also looking at becoming a driver, just because they're badgering me to death.
Busy little beaver.
Well, I'm a former paramedic, so I'm, I'm used to that kind of stuff.
I want to thank you for inviting me. Very handy.
Okay. And we are in our unfortunate 25th year of service. And I say unfortunate, because we're still dealing with this issue after 25 years. And we shouldn't be.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I remember in the 80s, when Westerly was doing the warm shelter through the churches, I don't know if you guys knew that, but they, every night, a different church, seven nights a week, there were seven churches that volunteered. And every night, the church opened up its doors and took care of it, because the warm homelessness in Westerly, very rare. There was a couple of people that everybody knew, but it changed in the 80s, as you know, drastically. And all of a sudden, you know, a warm shelter, good grief. So, you know, but it's a reality that everybody thought, well, some of us thought, what are we going to do with these buildings when we don't need? Didn't work out that way, did it? No, it's very sad.
I would say that I appreciate your comments on RICAN, and I'm willing to put them between seven and two on my list. But I do think that, and like I said, I do try to have an open mind and try to balance these things. But if they have a reporting situation that needs to be addressed somehow, we have to get the word, so that when we look at all these organizations, we, it's easier to understand for the council. But I am flexible, and, but I do think, I understand the concerns with the liquidity field, very, very important, and I did, I believe I put them in the middle of my list, but I don't think we're out of the woods with the economy, and that's why I put the so-called human resource things a little higher. But anyways. And I thank them for what they're doing, but I can't support the, I really have reservations about this Habitat for Humanity on the location they want to build it, for example, so...
Why?
Well, first of all, I did make a point of talking to our planner today, and I also concerned that Council Buck made, in that area, I think there should be a better location for that Habitat community. South County Habitat community should look at other sites in town.
Is there a, a house already on the site?
No. It's an older one, I think, right, Scott?
No, I think, as I understand, did you bring the photos? Okay. Would you, could you address that? Because I did call a town planner today. And I know Council Buck did express some concern, and the area that I'm familiar with, is a concern.
The lot, the lot in question is on Laurel Street. It is in between 49 Laurel and 53 Laurel. You can get to it by going down Hillside Avenue, taking a left, going towards Westerly, and it's, it's a pretty small lot. It's sandwiched in between two existing homes. The lot is vacant itself. As far as frontage goes, the, the site plan that was presented as part of this package, which is not stamped by a surveyor, by the way, okay? It says 96 feet of frontage. Our assessors' maps, which again, are not always accurate, say it's 80-foot frontage. So who's right, I really can't say at this point. But it's a very narrow, irregularly shaped lot.
Jim? On that small, it just requires, I think, last meeting, it just requires Brad to issue an administrative okay, I guess, because of the lot size?
Right.
So that's not a real cumbersome process, right?
Well, it, the process involves notifying people within 200 feet of that property. And if there are no negative comments on the proposal, he can issue what's called an administrative special use permit. If there are negative comments on it, it must go to the zoning board to get that special use permit. So it could take a while.
I think Council Buck, in that case, expressed that there would be concerns in the neighborhood. And it is a very small, if I understand where it is, and I've lived in Ashaway all my life, that's a real small area. I think we would move them to find another site.
Is anyone here from Habitat?
Well, if it can't, if it doesn't work out, then, I mean, if they can't get their, their, everything in, in order, they can't get what they need from the town, they can't get a septic that passes, or whatever, I guess they won't build it.
Lou Raymond, South County Habitat. You know, the, if you looked at the overall budget for this project, it's about $230,000 to, to do the project. And we sell our houses for $110,000. And so it's not a real great business model, as you can understand. But, you know, part of the, part of the thing is, is we have to find land that we, you know, are not going to pay a ton of money for. And I'm sure you're very well aware that any lots that are, you know, set up nicely for infrastructure and, and all the rest, you know, they start at $100,000, and it's hard to find those. So we're constantly looking for lots in the area around $35,000, because that's what we can work with. You know, and we, we look lots of places for, for land all over, all over Washington County. And so it's just not an easy find. I mean, it's easy to say you should build somewhere else, but to find those particular lots that'll fit into this kind of budget, it's very, very difficult. I've been doing this for a long time. You know, and if anybody has any suggestions of where they are, you know, I'm certainly willing to go and look for them. But one thing I would, I would like to say is, is that, you know, South County Habitat provides something, you know, that nobody else in the county provides. We're, we're the only CDC in the area that provides homeownership opportunities for people at 60% of the median income. That's the low group. Okay? We're the only one around that does that. And so you can understand, you know, to make the numbers work for, for a group that, that low of an income level, we have to find the bargains, and we have to work hard to, to develop those lots. And, you know, but what we do is, we provide a long-term solution for things. You know, our people, when they get into a home with a mortgage they can afford, they don't have to make the choices between medicine, food, you know, and all the other things that, you know, that they have to deal with on the everyday sort of thing. It's, it's, you have to look at it like an investment in the future. It's an expensive thing to, to provide this, but over the long haul, you definitely need to have it. And if we don't have this, then, you know, people like Linda, she's not going to be able to retire for another 100 years. You know, she's there dealing with the fact that we don't have enough affordable housing. You know, so I think, you know, all, all of us, Warm Shelter and, and Welcome House, you know, they're all doing the things that they need to do to provide the short-term services, or the transitional services, or the emergency services, and all the many things that they do. Somewhere along the line, we have to make the investment in the solution. And that's what Habitat is about, so...
Thank you.
I just have one quick question. How do you, do you have first preference to Hopkinton residents, renters, for these homes? How do you pick the folks to give into these homes?
Washington County people have the preference.
Okay, so it could be from someone outside of town?
It could be.
Okay.
The, the thing that concerns me, and if I do entertain it, it would probably be on the bottom of the list, the town of Hopkinton is very good in meeting its affordable housing goals. And it's, I know it's only one, and I think it's 82 or 83, the number. But my concern is, apparently, there would be objections, from what I understand, the impression. So who pays to go to the zoning board if you need a lawyer? Do you have your own lawyer on staff? How does that work?
Well, we would hire a lawyer if we needed to do that. We do have some lawyers that work pro bono for us.
Not that it would happen again, but that, that whole section of, of Ashaway was impacted by the flood that we had two years ago. But I know Council Buck, which the other two councils, where he lives on Church Street, which is very close by, and my concern, if, if this grant was given, what happens if you can't build? What happens to that money in the community development block grant?
Well, there's a couple of things that can happen. They will find another site in Hopkinton, or they forfeit the money eventually. But they'll, they'll be given time to find another site, and they'll work with Jeff to find another site.
Okay.
Because if they get funded, that's, I don't believe they're going to lose that funding. They're going to work their little tails off to find another site.
That's what we do.
Yeah.
But you can apply that to another site, other than that present site on Laurel Street?
I think we can, with permissions. Jeff would probably...
I will, I will, and I said I was flexible, and I will recognize that, because I know there's people who, I know at least one lady, and I think two, that have been involved with Habitat for Humanity. It's just that, from what I've heard of that site, I've been concerned about it. The question is, where do we put you in?
Sorry?
We have, I have here tonight with me, is I have our engineers here, if you, you know...
No, it's not necessary. It'll either work or it won't. That's my attitude. You'll work, I, I suspect you'll make it work somehow, but if you don't, you'll find another site.
Well, if we didn't think it could work, we wouldn't have invested the time that we already have in it, you know, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we rank the 16 initiatives with the community development block grant. And the rankings are, number one, line where the...
Go, go slow, so...
I'm sorry.
So, so, I was just going to slow you down. Well, he's going to make the motion.
Yeah, but the thing is...
Wait, she's in the process. We're going to make a motion to go to the ranking, and then we're going to make a motion for the resolution. Was there a problem with that?
Did you tabulate our rankings?
Wait.
I just have one question. I know initially, Councilor Hurst had, there were some redundant numbers.
I know. All right, go ahead.
Okay.
We're going to publish here, yeah?
Yes. And we're going to open it up.
We will.
Oh, you want to open, oh, you prefer we open it up first? I thought we kind of had. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to come up and speak before we make our motion, please do. Come on.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I...
No, no, that's quite all right. I was getting a little nervous, that's all.
That's fine, that's fine. Thank you, Jeff.
I'm Chris Hanifin, and I represent the Community Housing Land Trust. And I know, I was here last week, and I know you have some concerns about the work that we do as far as working with residents in your community. And we strive really very hard to work in all the communities that have funded us in the past. We are a statewide organization that has been around, and we have worked quite a bit with your, some of your surrounding communities to help with long-term affordable housing. And one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight is, one of the things that we have done, we were asked a few years ago to put together, by many of the rural communities asked for this, was some type of resource guide that would help the communities, especially when you have residents that will come in to a public facility in need. And not everyone at their fingertips knows exactly where to send people. Now, I'm sure they do a very good job here, but there's many types of resources available to individuals all across the state. So two years ago, we put together, if you don't mind, I'll give you each one.
Wonderful.
A resource guide, and we gave credit to all the communities that have helped us in the past. And we updated this resource guide last year with no funding from the communities this time, but it had been very successful. People had really liked it, so we used some of our own funding to reprint it. We did some corrections in it and some updates, and we have provided this. And I'll leave one with Jeff. We have more. We also, this time, have a very high-resolution PDF file, so that we can email it, and people can have it, and it's easy to make changes, and we can update that as things change. So that's one of the things. So it's not a, an absolute direct benefit, but it is a benefit in order that there's one place you can go if you need some information. So that's one thing. And the other thing I wanted to mention tonight that you may not be familiar with is, last year, we started a program with the state. The state came to us to ask us to administer, and like anything, we love acronyms. We call it the SHARP program. It's the State Housing Acquisition Rehab Program. The state has set aside a million dollars, and these are, this does not affect anyone's allocation. And the funds are there for the communities to use. For instance, if a property became available that you knew about, the planner may know about, the town may know about, that could be put back into good use as affordable housing, we have the ability, after we look at the property, we have to have an appraisal, appraisal has to be done, the property could be purchased and held until, say, some rehab's done and resold as an affordable unit. We are doing one in a neighboring community in Richmond. Property came into us, was for sale. The committee reviewed it, there was an appraisal done, and it took us about 60 days from the time the application came in to the closing, which is pretty good. And now the property's in, going through some rehab, and it will be on the market to be sold to a low to moderate income borrower. So I just wanted to make you aware that that program is available for all the communities to... to use. We look forward to working with you, and I thank you for your support in the past.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to come up? Yes, please.
My name's Regina DeAngelo. I'm with the Warm Center. We, as you know, we've applied for two CDBG grants this year. One is for our job readiness programs, and I thought you'd like to know that anyone who comes through Warm gets job placement case management. So they, if they are not already working, they will be working. 133 new residents benefited from our job training and readiness program last year, and then 64 of them became newly employed. This is all in the application, so you've read it. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. But I just thought I'd let you know those numbers and point out that there are also more specific numbers for Hopkinton, if you would like to know those, for all of our different programs. I don't think it's in the application. But there are two applications, and the reason we are asking for shelter renovations is that our shelter is bursting at the seams. So we have six beds for women, nine beds, total of 19 beds, and we have been full every But we, our goal is not to be a temporary shelter forever. Our goal is to get people into permanent housing. And one of our programs is called Harvest Homes, and that encourages, case manages people into homes throughout the Westerly area, scattered throughout the area. So we have 11 families in our Harvest Homes right now, and that includes 31 children. But there are 42 still on the waiting list, so that gives you an idea of what the need Among all of the residents who benefit from, among all of the people who benefit from Warm's case management, there are 66 from Hopkinton last year. And if you'd like to know, break it down according to what service they received, I can let you know that if you need to.
What did you say about the houses? You mentioned, what type of house? How do you transition them from the center to a house?
So there's two programs. There is Warm Up and Harvest Homes. And what we do is, when people are ready, we encourage them to go into independent supportive housing. So we either rent inexpensive properties around Westerly, if I have this, correct me if I'm wrong, and we house people in them, because a lot of the times, they are single moms with a kid or two, and they need a place to stay. Or they're people who are ready to transition out of a shelter, and they need a place for a longer period of time. So based on their income, and that they can only spend a certain amount of their income on housing, we get them into these various apartments.
When I first heard about that program, well, it's probably about three years now. It took a few years back. A friend's daughter, single mom, and needed housing. And she'd met a young man, they wanted to get married, and, you know, do the whole thing, get married, blah, blah, blah. But they couldn't, I mean, they just couldn't make it on their own, even, and they were living with her. Well, along comes this program. Well, when I first heard about it, I said, "They did what?" They got them an apartment with the guideline, you know, and the rules that, you know, you have to save a certain amount, as we did before in the shelter. But they had to save a certain amount of their income, they had to work towards certain goals, and it could take them a considerable amount of time to get there. Well, it's years since then. They're now, have their own apartment, they have two children, they long since got married. And, I mean, it's just, it's exactly the perfect outcome that you would want. But back then, when I asked, I said, "Who's doing that in Westerly? Who's doing that?" And, because this was a Hopkinton resident, they said, "The churches, the churches." They thought it was the churches. Well, I recently, well, about a year ago, I found out it was the Warm Shelter that was actually doing it.
Which is why we're the Warm Center now, because we offer all social service needs.
Yes. Oh, you start referring to yourself as a Warm Center now?
We are the Warm Center now, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I put the renovation number one.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
Oh, as far as the renovation, do you still have that tiny little kitchen? Did that ever get renovated?
Yes.
You still have it? Does it still have the blue, the blue and white still?
The blue and white.
No, we haven't. My name is Russ Flacherich. I'm the program director for Warm. I don't want to take up too much of your time. But I do want to thank you for your continued support. Without this, we really would not be able to do the work that we do. We are in the midst, as you bring up the kitchen, we are under construction for our new center, which will be an administrative, the first floor will be administrative offices and a new kitchen, which will be known as Anita's Kitchen. There's a whole story that goes with that. And the second floor will be six apartments for the disabled, for permanent housing. We expect that this project will be completed in January, February, hopefully. And with the $25,000 that we're asking for renovations, we will renovate the shelter. It will help us to be handicapped accessible. We will not increase the number of beds for shelter, but, and this is a building that really has gotten a lot more use than I think anybody ever expected. And so we'll take our small, what is currently our very small kitchen, which has seating capacity for about 22 to 25, and we're actually doing about 50 meals per seating. So we do about 100 meals a day, lunch and dinner. So we'll take that area, be able to rehab it, and increase the living space for the residents who are experiencing homelessness and coming into shelter. So it's just a little bit about where we're going, and we are. In Rhode Island, it's very hard to change your name. Everybody still refers to us as the Warm Shelter, but we are really a center to provide services to folks who are in need.
It's like Wood River, they always call it the clinic. It's not, we're not a clinic, we're a center. The kitchen is smaller than this space.
Tiny. And the fact that we're able to put out 100 meals a day is pretty spectacular, I think. I've been down there for organizations that have given money, not money, but food after an event. And when we had the Centennial, I mean, not the Centennial, but the anniversary for the town of Hopkinton, I was left over the cake that we took down there for the residents. They enjoyed some of the Hopkinton anniversary cake a few years ago. And we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I thank you all very much.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay. I guess you can have your motion now. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see any hands waving. No, go right ahead. No hurry. Okay.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Peggy Benz, and I'm the Executive Director of the Education Exchange. We did have a name change, and we're still trying to let people know this. We changed our name long about 2006. We've been around, we started in Charahoe, actually.
And what was your name before?
The Washington County Adult Learning Center. Would you mind? I've got some information.
Go ahead.
We're, our request to CDBG is a request to help us fund a computer lab for the GED testing center. Beginning towards the middle of 2013, and as, moving forward from January 1st, 2014, all GED tests will be done on the computer. We do not, at this time, have the infrastructure to be able to offer to residents of Washington County the ability to do the testing. We have to upgrade our computer labs. And this is, this is the reason for our request. Your request has been, the request to Hopkinton is prorated based upon the number of students that we've served over the last year. I'd just like to, and just tell you a little story, which is kind of very neat for me. You know, I've heard, this is the third meeting that I've been to, and it's all about your residents and helping our communities be successful. The Washington County Adult Learning Center, which is now known as the Education Exchange, long about 1995, took in one of the Hopkinton residents that came knocked on our door to get their GED. Single parent, had several children, didn't have any place to go, had just been laid off from a job, didn't have a high school diploma, had to drop out of school to help her family. She came to us, she worked with the teachers, she was able to get a GED. With that GED, she then carried that GED and then went for further training and education. And I'm very happy to say now, she's a contributing member of your community, she's fully employed, and she's just one of several hundreds of people that have come through our center. And I'm asking you to support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Make sure.
I know there was a question about my ranking, but I have changed them. But are we going to decide how?
Frank's got a motion to make. Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to preface my motion here regarding the rankings of the initiatives by saying that I'm humbled by all the great work you folks do. I do also do a lot of work outside of my banking job and town council as well in the community, and I'm humbled again by all your great work. So I wanted to make a motion on the ranking initiatives tonight. And the first I'd like to make is the Langworthy Field Improvements for $32,500. That's number one.
Oh, and we're going to go slow for Lisa.
Okay.
I don't blame him.
And Cynthia.
Oh, and Cynthia.
And number two, the Townwide Rental Rehab Program for $55,000. Number three, for $40,000, Townwide Housing Rehab Operating.
Who is that? What number?
Five.
Number four, the Revitalization Management for $8,000.
That's true.
No, it's four on his list. That's all.
Number five, the Brushy Brook Bridge for $50,000. Number six, the Resource Center for $5,000. Number seven, Welcome House.
Resource Center.
Yeah, yeah, that's Domestic Violence Resource Center.
For $5,000, so number six. Number seven is the Welcome House Operating for $5,000. Number eight is Rycan for $3,500. Number nine is Warm Shelter for $8,000.
That's the jobs.
Yep. Number 10, Johnny Cake Center for $5,000. Number 11, Habitat Home for $40,000. Number 12, Welcome House Generator for $3,000. Number 13 is the Warm Shelter Renovations for $25,000. Number 14, Education Exchange for $2,000. 15, Community Land Trust for $3,000. And lastly, Washington County CDC for $5,000. We, as a council, have remained to keep all these initiatives fully funded. We haven't eliminated any, nor do we reduce any amounts, totaling $300,000.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion?
Obviously, I believe that the Warm Shelter renovations should be number one, obviously. That's way down on the list. The, and I'll just reiterate what I, I thought we were going to, you know, when we take all our numbers and then evaluate it that way, you know, just say, you know, someplace second or whatever. But I did, I am in support of the Washington County CDC. I did look at, there was a small description on Hopkinton, and that's what I looked at, my consulting type stuff. But as I do note that the state goes out and they make the interpretations, but I don't want to discount the things in the northern part of town, but I really think a lot of people are hurting. And I think that places like Warm Shelter and groups like that, I mean, most of us never have to worry about where we're going to sleep at night, we don't know how we're going to get a meal, these things that we take for granted. But there are people in this community that are hurting. Not that improving facilities are important in the community, but I just think with the economy the way it is, I think we should focus on that. But that's a decision the state will make, and I have to work with other members of the town council. I try to listen to South County Habitat for Humanity, and they understand there is concerns with that site, and they're willing to look at another site if that doesn't pan out. I yielded on the Rycan thing, although I think we need to somehow explain to them the importance of resolving some of the issues that I know Councilor Capello brought up. But anyways, in the token of working with my fellow counselors, but I think that we have to be cognizant of the human needs, not only necessarily the aesthetic needs or maybe the recreational needs of the community. I think, right, the way the economy is, they should take precedence. But in a spirit of cooperation, I'll support that motion.
Lisa, could you read, we had one counselor, Robert Capello, who had a, submitted her, she's away, and she submitted her thoughts and comments on the proposals tonight. So if you could read that into the record?
Sure. She had ranked them, one, Townwide Rental Rehabilitation. Two, South County Habitat for Humanity. And her notes were, "Both of these give us more housing in our local community, both rental and permanent for single family and for families. The house designated by Habitat is really wonderful and very creative design for a very difficult lot. I think these are the most important aspects of CDBG for this year." Three, Langworthy Field Improvements, and her comment was, "Important not just for the public, but for all of our Hope Valley students who use the field through, all throughout their school year. It really does need to be upgraded and improved for everyone's benefit." Four, Education Exchange, in her comments, "A small amount of money that will go a very long way to encouraging their clients and giving them the competence needed to pursue jobs and careers." Five, Johnny Cake Center at Westerly. Six, Warm Shelter Job Readiness. Seven, Welcome House Generator, for comments, "Kind to their entire community by opening the use of their refrigeration and freezing capability during power outages. The same good faith and help that the Charahoe School District did by opening the schools for showers and bathing during the last emergency. This kind act should be honored." Eight, Domestic Violence Resource Center. Nine, Welcome House Operating. Ten, Townwide Housing Rehabilitation Operating. Eleven, Revitalization Management. Her last comments, I did not rank any others. "CDBG will give money to management entities regardless of our ranking or desires. I like Warm Shelter, but our renovations for our town is more important to me. We've supported them for many years, probably decades, but now it's really nice to be able to support some new rental and permanent housing for ourselves. I also gave my reason for not supporting Rycan at the April 9th meeting. Thank you respectfully, Robert Capello."
Thank you, Lisa. Just to add one thing, I'm not sure I did it, when we, when we look at the past four years, I think I neglected one point. The town initiatives, I call them the town initiatives, the home repair program, doing, you know, sidewalks, or the rental program, the Hope Valley revitalization. And Hope Valley got targeted way back when because that was the part of town that was deteriorating the most, and the income guidelines were more in keeping with the CDBG. However, in the past, it doesn't mean it could However, in the past, it doesn't mean it can't change, but in the past, the town has always put the town initiatives first, primarily because it would lower the tax rate. Some of these initiatives, it's not something that the town would have to spend money on. And the other side of it is some of these programs, they have a townwide benefit. So that was the thinking in the past, why town, town things got put first, and then all the agencies ended up getting ranked. And the town part of it got ranked too, but they were lumped into it, into the first section. I guess those are the only two comments I had. Do you have anything else to add?
Nope.
No. All right. I wanted to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I know you all are probably very, very busy, but we do, the town of Hopkinton very much appreciates all that you do for our residents. And you can know that all the volunteers that you have are, the, you know, you provide services, and if the town had to do it, we'd fall over, our tax rate would go up so much higher. But we don't have to do that, so you guys do it. If, and if you didn't have your volunteers, I know maybe some of you don't have volunteers, but those who do, and I suspect many of you do, for all those volunteers, if you had to provide, if you had to pay them, you couldn't do it either. So we're kind of all in this together. And I want to thank you for coming out tonight. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, there's also a motion.
I'd like to make a motion also to adopt the authorization resolution.
Is there a second?
The administration included in that too, right? That we don't rank.
Right.
Right.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have a recess for a couple of minutes while they leave. Well, they're leaving. I've got to sign for the resolutions that just passed. Okay, we're going to ask you guys to, so we can get going. We're not going to push out right away, but sort of.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, next up is an ordinance, repeal of an ordinance. It is the Highway Commission that you had a hearing on April 2nd.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we repeal the ordinance identified as Chapter Two Administration, Article Two Boards, Commissions, Committees, Division Six Highway Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in, oh, is there any discussion? Sorry.
No, I think we've talked about this one enough, and we've figured it's outlived its usefulness, and I think it's a good thing to get rid of.
I think we have to review other boards and commissions other than that.
Oh, we will.
Yeah.
And that'll be a bigger meeting, that's for sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent agenda. Is there anything to remove from the consent agenda before we approve it?
Yeah, I like, I would say that I made corrections that you have for the March, I think it's the March 19th, wasn't that the meeting? I called it correct. And should we pull that or just by common consent approve the?
I'm inviting, I cannot wait until.
Yeah, well, it's not necessary, but I just, I will move that consent agenda be adopted except the report of the building and zoning official and the minutes, including the minutes for the corrections that were submitted tonight for the minutes.
You're including them or excluding them?
I was including, well, she updated them, because I finally come on stage.
What's your motion?
So, wait a minute, wait a minute. So, all right, so we've pulled off the March 19 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, that's pulled off.
That's the meeting, right?
And you also pulled off the building and zoning official's report.
Yes, yes.
So I'll help you out. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the March 19 and the building and zoning official pulled off the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the March 19 minutes, we've been provided the correction. So is there a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the building and zoning report?
Yes, I do have a question for the manager.
I've got a question for the solicitor. It's not on the agenda. He only, he has a question about the report. So isn't that something that he should request to the manager on his own, but not at a council meeting? Because it's not on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Could you talk to the manager about that? Whatever that question is?
Okay.
Because it's not on the agenda. Is that okay?
Well, now, I can't question reports.
Unless they're on the agenda.
Why do it before the meeting?
Yeah, you do it before the meeting. That's a good idea.
I just picked this up today.
That's okay.
So I apologize to the manager.
No, that's all right.
I'll make a motion that we accept the report of the building and zoning official.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First, public forum. Town managers' report.
Just very briefly, the Rhode Island State Planning Council is conducting public hearings on Thursday, April 26th, at the Department of Administration Building in Providence to accept comments from the general public on the draft of the FFY 2013-16 Transportation Improvement Program. The tip is updated every four years. The town of Hopkinton submitted its tip projects back in October of last year, and they included Ashaway Road, Woodville Road, Laurel Street, Maxon Street, and Chase Hill Road. And the town will be represented at that meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the governor's proposed legislative package also?
What's on the agenda later on.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Sorry. Thank you. Old business. We need to set a date for the growth management ordinance.
I had an opportunity to look ahead onto your May timeframe. This is the last, your second and last meeting of the month, and there's not enough time to get it on from May 7th, so I would suggest May 21.
Okay. That's good. Okay, we'll have it for May 21st then. We don't need a motion. Okay, new business. Have at it.
Thank you. As we're all probably well aware, Governor Lincoln Chafee submitted a package of legislative initiatives to the General Assembly. This package of legislation was intended to offset the losses municipalities have experienced due to the weak economy and years of practices at the state level over which the towns and cities had little or no control, and also to prevent cities and towns from entering into adverse fiscal positions. As a result, there has been several meetings that have already been conducted. Two were management, executive strategy sessions at the State House, of which I attended both of them. There was a Senate Finance Hearing last Thursday, and April 26th, there's a House Finance Hearing. And then on April 26th, there is a townwide, I'm sorry, a regional meeting at the Wesley Town Hall, at which the governor will appear to discuss his legislative package. During all these proposed legislative meetings, the governor has taken a hands-on approach, and he has respectfully requested the town administrators, the town managers, and the mayors to go back to their town or city councils to pass a resolution supporting his legislative initiatives. In Hopkinton, the loss of state aid is over $1 million each year. Also, a $227,000 loss of general revenue sharing, and a loss of $785,000 in motor vehicle tax reimbursements from the state of Rhode Island. So as you can see, the cities and towns have been basically taking it on the chin the last several years. This package, proposed legislation includes seven, seven laws, seven acts, and I won't go into each one individually, but they're listed in your, in your package. They assist the cities and towns with the tools that they need in order to increase revenues and decrease expenses in dealing with pension reform and municipal reform, especially in the area of collective bargaining negotiations. These legislative acts really, to be very honest with you, really benefit mostly the larger cities, the distressed communities, although they will somewhat impact the town of Hopkinton in certain areas. The mantra of the city managers and administrators and mayors is that we're basically all in this together, that if the city of Providence declares bankruptcy or any other major city or town in Rhode Island, all the cities and towns suffers, because the state will come to their aid, and that will be that much less that the individual towns will get. At the request of the governor's office and with the full support of the Rhode Island Town Managers Association, they are requesting that each town or city council consider a resolution supporting these legislative initiatives, and that resolution is before you this evening.
Thank you.
Bill, I just want to, you know, I'm in full support of this governor's initiative for the municipal stability package. I think anytime that the towns are given more autonomy on their financial well-being, I think it's a great thing, and I think it'll only help us out in the end. And I'm glad that he stepped, the governor's stepping up to the plate to give us that potential authority. I had one quick question on, and I'm not sure if you know, maybe we can talk later about, it's about the education piece. You know, as it pertains to the regional school districts, one item I wasn't quite sure of, and maybe you know, it's on the resolution to support the governor's municipal stability package. It's the last three bullet points. Really, it's a second, second from the last. It starts with legislative, legislation providing that supplemental appropriations for the payment of past annual school department expenditures would not be included in a municipality's maintenance of effort. I'm trying to just quickly wrap my head around that piece of it. Does that, does that mean kind of like the maintenance of effort kind of goes out the window in part, or?
I think what they're referencing there, and I'm not sure how it affects the town of Hopkinton, because they're in the Charro Regional School District, and they could fall under the Charro Act. Basically, what that is, is that the town can reduce its maintenance of effort funding by the amount of debt service that a town, a town incurs from the school department.
Okay. All right, great.
All sorts of debt service.
Yeah, yeah, I kind of thought that, but it seemed a little wordy, but, okay, thanks. I'm in full support of the resolution, so.
Scott, do you have anything?
Well, I'm not interested in voting on it tonight. I haven't read everything. I started into it, and I did make some notes. I prefer us to hold off until, I, I don't feel I have a command of all the information. I do think that we do have a problem with the financial stability of a lot of the cities and towns. And I think what we have to do in the state is somehow recognize towns that are financially responsible. Not all cities and towns are operated the same. I mean, some towns seem to be completely reckless with their finances, and they're in the predicament they're in today. And I continually seek, like, legislation dealing with finances of cities and towns, and yet they seem to continually refuse to understand the predicament of regional school districts or towns in them, whether it be with budget caps and things of that nature. And schools are not independent of their cities and towns. Even in Charro, even though we don't have the power to approve their bottom line of their school budget, we're still accountable for what Charro does. I mean, I see no crucial reason why we have to vote on this tonight. You know, the pension crisis is a serious issue. We definitely get a, get a hand on it, but when you, when you make an endorsement of something, you should feel 100% confident with everything, not just to say, we got to do something about the pension crisis. No logical person would say you shouldn't be doing something about the pension crisis or where these cities and towns are going. But, you know, I've been very big on this management study, study dealing with the schools, and you know, how do we know how different cities and towns operate, you know, and things of that nature? So, I mean, I'd like to go to the meeting with the governor, hear what he has to say. We have two other councillors that are not here, and if we're going to put our weight behind something, we should feel 100% confident. I haven't read all the material. I've read some of it, and I did make some notes, but I prefer us to wait until maybe the next meeting where the other two councillors can weigh in, because it's not going to be, it's not crucial that we vote on it tonight. We did the other because we had, we was under the timeline to get it approved, but I prefer we don't just vote on it tonight.
I'd like to suggest that I'm prepared to vote on it tonight.
I read the initiatives, and I feel very confident, so.
Okay.
I guess.
I'd just like to make one point. Although it is an extensive package that you have in front of you tonight, we presented the same package the last week in March that we forwarded to the council. It's the exact same package, and I just reissued it again for, for this meeting.
I know, I have two copies.
Yeah, so, I mean.
That's okay. That's fine. No, I don't blame you.
And you just got to keep in mind too, that the point of all the initiatives in this package is to help the cities and towns. There's nothing in here that would hurt this town.
Right, right.
Hurt any other city or town. It's all designed to help cities and towns. None of it's going anywhere, because the legislature always votes this stuff down anyway, but what the heck. If you were to get it, if you were to get it, or any piece of it, it might help us when we negotiate a contract, or it might help us, you know, in other ways. So there's nothing in it that would hurt any city or town, including this one.
Well, do you want to make a motion to adopt this resolution?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to consider a resolution to support the governor's municipal stability package.
Well, you want to vote to adopt it?
I would like to vote to adopt.
Okay.
The resolution to support the governor's municipal stability package.
Is there a second? No, so it doesn't go anywhere. Okay. All right, we'll bring it up in another council meeting. All right, motion fails. Public forum, last public forum. No. All right. Last item was the correspondence. Let me find that. It was a workshop that they did last year. Yeah, it's going to come up again. I couldn't find it in the back. Oh, there it is, first item. At U, let's see, is it at URI? Oh, it's at the Charleston Cross Mills Public Library on 4417 Old Post Road in Charleston. It's going to be May 3rd from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., that's Thursday night, to learn the importance of regular testing, how to protect your well water from pollution, and proper well maintenance. It's all about private well owners. It's sponsored by the Charleston Conservation Commission, and the workshops are conducted by URI Cooperative Extension Program. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, I didn't make it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just asking.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.